For the city council meeting of Wednesday, September 17th, 2014 at 7:30 PM. Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brennan, Mrs. Rancunzo, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarski, please rise for a moment of silent meditation and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Mr. President, I ask that we remember those in our community that are less fortunate than we are in any and every way, remember those who have lost loved ones since the last time we were in these chambers. This is a bit overdue and apologize for that. Mr. Barnes, recognizing your loss and your family, continually keeping you in our prayers as well. And finally, we ask our God and Creator to give us the wisdom and the best information to make the best decisions for the citizens of the city of Erie.
Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Of purple of minutes from the meeting of Wednesday, 6th, September 3rd, and bills for payments, September 19th and 26th, 2014. Mr. Brennan, Mrs. Rancunzo, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon.
Is there anyone speak on repository sales? Please give us your name and address.
My name is Jerry Strickland. My address is 4009 Davidson Avenue, Erie, PA. I'd like to buy the property at 704 East 7th Street.
Mr. President, can you just tell us a little bit about, is there a building on it, is it just a lot, and what you want to do with the property?
It's just an empty lot. I bought the house next door, but it has, it doesn't have a yard, and I would like to use that as a yard, put it with the house as a yard.
Okay. That's easy. Currently, is there, type, what type of maintenance need to be done? Is there grass tall, is there any dumpings or junk stored there?
No, the grass just needs to be cut. So, I've been picking up the yard since I've been there, so.
How long have you been there, sir?
I bought the house in May. I've been doing work on it for like two months now.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Strickland, will you be living in that house? Is that house for you and your family?
Yes, it is.
Okay, and you've been working on fixing up the house?
Yes, I am.
Okay, and so then this will just be a yard for you?
Yes.
Be used for park or anything?
No, I want to put a fence around it and just put it as a yard with the whole house.
Okay, very nice, thank you. That sounds like a great project.
There's no other questions. We will not vote on that tonight, but we will vote on that at our next meeting. You're welcome to be here, you don't have to. Administration and other authorities will contact you on the decision, and we do wish you well with that property.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Are there any other repository sales? Are there any other repository sales? Are there any other repository sales? Hearing non-citizens to be heard, Mr. Randy Barnes.
Thank you, President Witherspoon, council, mayor staff, guests, those aren't with us, watching on television. My name is Randy Barnes, 109 Walton Point, Erie, Pennsylvania. I want to talk a little bit about why I come to council. Prior to 1987, I'd come to council a couple times, talk about zoning, but since 1987, I've come to council thinking I could help educate the public and educate council members. One of the things I realize is people in my generation, maybe even two generations behind me now, the teenagers and the people in their twenties and thirties, have kind of lost the urge to vote, because I think they don't realize, they get delusional with politics, and they don't realize that politics is a lot about favors, doing a favor, getting a favor, and it's kind of a lot like life, except when it comes to politics, it's usually involved taxpayers' money, those favors. Back when the city clerk retired after 48 years, he told the media that he'd wanted to retire a year before that, but Councilman Winarski asked him not to. So, I'm not sure if you consider how he thought about that, but he decided maybe as a favor to Mr. Winarski that he would not retire, and he would stay on another year while Councilman Winarski was president. So again, in politics, there's a lot about when you give a favor, you get a favor. So I want to read from the minutes of July 16th to 2014. By Mr. Winarski, seconded by Mr. Witherspoon, resolved, et cetera, that James Clem will be hereby retained as a consultant at Erie City Council, as an archivist, for a two-year period, retainer fee of $1,000 a month. Whether you have the other half of the teeter totter, you know, you give a favor, you get a favor, give and get. But I question in my mind, this archivist, now, are we archiving records for the past 48 years, when the man was in the office? Because we had 48 years to archive those records, or are we archiving records prior to 1966? I know the council has the answer, because they decided that these records needed archived enough that we should pay someone $1,000 a month to archive them. Coincidence, that's two city council people's salary a month. We're paying someone to archive records. Now again, 48 years took, you know, went come and gone, and then what happened to those records? Were they being archived properly? Because if they weren't, we've just given the guy that was in charge for a lot of that time, $1,000 a month to fix something. I'm not sure what that something is. So that, boys and girls and people who are watching, is what politics is. Don't get delusional, go out and vote, because your vote does count. But when you see these favors back and forth, remember, it is your money. It's taxpayers' money. It's real dollars that the city has collected from you, in the form of taxes or fees or garbage fees, sewer fees. That's real money. So I don't know how we get past that, except that we need to explore and know that we're getting our $1,000 a month worth, $12,000 a year, $24,000 for the next two years, to be an archivist, to fix records in an office where the person we're paying to fix those records worked for 48 years. Now what took place in those 48 years? Now, I don't know what happened back in 1966, but I know the past eight, 10 years history that there's about 100 man-hours a week in that office, so 400 man-hours a month, 400 man-hours a month to prepare and do all the work they do. But in those 400 hours a month, there was no time to archive these records. But now there is time, because we have $1,000 a month to spend on an archivist, what we never had before. I think I talked about last meeting that maybe 400 hours a month isn't enough time in that office. Maybe we need 500 or 600 man-hours, maybe we need to double the size. Because I don't know how one archivist can go back and fix all the problems that apparently there are with these records. I mean, like, there are a lot of problems with the records, that's why we've hired an archivist, I guess. So it almost sounds like you're, like we're hiring the person that, that was responsible for those records, for archiving those. We're hiring the guy that was responsible for those records, in some part, for some 48 years, part of those years maybe being the chief clerk and the other years working in the office. We've hired that person to come back and fix what wasn't done in the past 48 years since 1966. Now how much better will our government run, city council, the city of Erie run, once these archives, these records are archived? What kind of payback will the citizens get? Maybe you can tell me that at next meeting. Hey, thank you very much, have a nice evening.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. President, I know it's out of the ordinary to respond sometimes to citizens to be heard, especially ones from Harbor Creek, but, and next meeting, I will give a detailed development of what has gone on. This isn't just about archiving, this is about helping a clerk's office that needs some experience due to the fact of the personnel there, nothing against the personnel, but I will follow up on the citizen from Harbor Creek, not Erie, Harbor Creek, and go from there.
Thank you, Mr. Winarski.
Thank you. And just for the record, I do own property in the city of Erie, I pay serious property taxes, and some of my income is derived by customers.
Mr. Barnes.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, board.
Good evening.
Mersky.
Good evening. I have my glasses on.
Thank you. Mr. Brennan.
Could we have your name and address, please?
Oh, yeah, I guess you can.
Thank you.
Well, I was, I was directing it to, and Mr. Winarski and Witherspoon and Katz, and he skipped out, and Coonan, Horen, Beverly Potts, 605 Elm Court, Erie, Pennsylvania. I'm here in favor of the McVie, Brad Viedock. I can't even envision these plans for a public park and a greenway. This is East Avenue, people. Why is it the city always is trying to tear down historical landmarks? This is all a joke. Seems like that's all they want to do, is if it's historical and it's a landmark, let's tear it down. And I don't think that the father, Eddie St. Anne's, is doing much with it anymore. Keeping that area clean would be a challenge. Take a look at Wayne Park, with trash always everywhere. Then we travel the bayfront, trash seems to always be on the bayfront. People are moving, and you'll see pillows laying on the bayfront, you'll see all kinds of trash up against the walls, you'll see grass growing up against the walls. We're talking about the bayfront, of which I refuse to travel. I will go up over Downing, I will go over to the Franklin Avenue Bridge, I will not take the bayfront, because I don't think I save that much time. I think it takes me longer to get to that side of town. How about the old Erie engine building? Do you notice when you're coming in north, imagine travelers coming in north to go down to the bayfront? What do they have to look at? Holes in these buildings, tear them down. Or is that a landmark? Maybe that's a landmark, I forgot. People have no pride, they take no pride in anything, including their properties. And you don't want to know why? Because right now, the east side of Erie is pretty much all renters, and renters don't want to take care of the property. I will pick up Elm Court on a weekly basis and pick up trash that people leave sitting on my curb, cups of coffee, beer bottles, and I will go from Birch Court to my street around to the other corner on Payne Avenue and pick up garbage to throw away. Who's in charge of all these areas on the east side of Erie, do you know? When was the last time our mayor even bothered to take a ride across the bayfront to see what it looks like? Or take a ride across Atkins Street, which I just said to him, hasn't had anything done to it since, for eight years? And one year, about four years ago, I bugged Doug Mitchell about paving from Payne Avenue to the end of my street on Elm Court, and you know what they did? Just that. If you come and you, that's a thoroughfare, the bus travels there, goes past East High School, goes past St. Chasmer's Church, take a ride over that street and you tell me what you think. You know what the mayor said to me at the car show? Well, they'll have to assess it. For eight years, you're going to assess it? Come on, people, it's about time they did something with it, I'm thinking. Would they close any bridges in Pittsburgh? My friends live off of Neville Island, and there's three bridges there that go from one area to various areas across. Do you think they'd close any of those bridges? I don't think so. Meadville is beginning to look at the Mead Avenue Bridge and going to rebuild, and that's about time. That's been closed a long time. Couple of months ago, there was a letter to the editor by a young man that's all in favor of what I'm in favor of, is keeping the bridge, rebuilding it. And my, my thing about that is, it seems so funny. First, we, first we had to do a study, so we had to bring some people in and pay money to do a study, and the study said, I don't even know what the study said. I'm not sure they told us, maybe they did, I just don't remember. And now we're going to have an architect come in for this, whatever it is, are you kidding me? This is East Avenue, I'm telling you. There's not going to be anything beautifying without being trashy within a year. And who's going to take care of that? We can't find the money to rebuild the bridge, but we certainly can find the money to hire people to come in to study it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other citizens to be heard? Are there any other citizens to be heard?
Most of you know who I am, Ron Stempka, 3925 Marion Street, okay? Okay, we were talking about the Chris program, Mersky was talking about putting an authority on that, weren't you? Wanted authority to get that pushed here? Who was that idea? Having authority? Which one? You were on TV about having a study session on it.
We listen, we, Sarge, your turn to talk to us, we aren't going to dialogue.
Okay, well, okay, well, I'm just wondering if that's going to be the case, like the water authority, for instance. That guy is going wild down there. We didn't use much water this year, so we're going to raise the water rates. He's already charging you $35 every quarter just to make the bill out. The 17 something for the water, and in the other parts, another 17. But, you know, they're raising them what they want to do. You know, this is a distraught city, that's what it is, y'all, you know that, especially when, first day of school, here's 20, 30 kids, born kids in the classroom, probably speak English. How many people showed up for that, the first day in Erie for schools? And like this, you guys passed that hotel down there, that's the biggest joke I've ever seen, and 90% of the people in Erie figure it's the same way, and you guys voted that hotel on down the bayfront, next down there, down there, the ramp and everything. Who, you know, who's going to pay for it? The taxpayer. How much is that hotel down there paying in tax? Because they haven't paid anything, as far as I know, the big hotel that's down there now. How much are they paying to pay that back? Because that was funded by the county, wasn't it? I'm asking questions, and I know you, ain't no dialogue, but someone, well, okay, Mr. Witherspoon, I'm pointing to you, what do you think about that? Well, you know, we can just, we can do something different for a change, some dialogue here.
No dialogue. Listen to you.
Well, I want to know what's going on, that's all.
We listen to you, we hear you.
Oh, hm, I tried to talk to the senator and everything, and we get nothing with him. So I think you guys better start waking up, you're spending too much money, this is a distraught city. As soon as you people realize that, we don't have money, I know we got to go ahead, but you're borrowing money. I was wondering on 13th and Peach there, there's another one, how much money, I heard 58 million is going to be put in that area for new condos? How many condos are sold out of them, those ones they have? How many people are going to look out the back window, and there's nothing to look at? You're going to see the drunks walking up and down State Street. That's about it. Did you guys pass another bill like that, 58 million, to build condos on that street, on 13th and Peach? So none of you guys are asking, I don't like this dialogue stuff. I'm saying something, someone should say something. I mean, you guys are looking like, is that guy stupid or what? Come on, let's wake up, you guys, get some dialogue here. What do you got, you all looking funny. Well, you guys better start waking up. Like I said, this is a distraught city, look at the kids and the foreigners coming into Erie. Okay, next time, find out how many children came into the school district, okay? They just walked in, the foreigners, can hardly speak English, how many? You'll be surprised, I already talked to somebody, the number's pretty high. And who's going to pay that? The taxpayer. It's going to be the burden on the taxpayer. Am I right or wrong? So I think some, I think city councils better stop spending all this money that they don't have and borrow money. Pretty soon, we're going to be back in the hole we were before. Whoever's going to go for mayor, better wake up and start getting over here and start sticking out, like begging, what they used to do. My good buddy begs. And he was on city council, he didn't care, he said it like it was. And I don't see any one of yous, and I'm, I'm casual, the only one would say something if he can open his mouth, but the way you guys got him gagged down here, and he can't say a word. Well, I better let you guys go, see what goes on, okay? Some of the questions I asked, okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, take care, have a nice night.
Thank you very much. Are there any other citizens to be heard? Are there any other citizens to be heard? Are there any other citizens to be heard?
I already know my name, but I was just going to say one more thing.
No, you can only come up once.
I'll shoot.
Yes, ma'am. Just once.
I want to say it's a chance.
Yes, just once, but thank you.
I'll be happy, sir.
Yes, ma'am. For the third and final time, are there any other citizens to be heard? Hearing none, Rose.
Ordinances for final passage. Council file number 15884, official ordinance number 302014, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $32,079.28 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue to provide for the expenditure thereof for construction oversight services for the historic Little Italy streetscape improvement project. Sponsored by Mr. Mersky and seconded by Mr. Brennan, the council file bill number 15884, and now known as official file ordinance number 302014, be finally passed by the city council. Mr. Brennan, Mrs. Rancunzo, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. City council pass official file ordinance number 302014, finally by ayes, seven, nays, Ordinance council file number 15885, official ordinance number 31 of 2014, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $10,920.80 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue to provide for the expenditure thereof for construction monitoring services for the Perry Square curb bump out project. Sponsored by Mr. Mersky, seconded by Mr. Brennan, the council file ordinance bill number 15885, and now known as official file ordinance number 312014, be finally passed by the city council. Mr. Brennan, Mrs. Rancunzo, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. City council pass official file ordinance number 312014, finally by ayes, seven, nays, Next, we have ordinances for first reading. Council file number 15886, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $50,000 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue received from an EPE Great Lakes Restoration Initiative grant in the amount of $25,000 and $25,000 from the Lake Erie Arbitorium at Frontier Park and providing for the expenditure thereof for the LEAF Education Building Green Roof Design Build Project. Sponsored by Mr. Mersky and seconded by Mr. Kwiatowski, that council file ordinance number 15886, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the city council. Mr. Brennan, Mrs. Rancunzo, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. City council Brennan adopt, council file ordinance 15886 by ayes, seven, nays, zero, on first reading. Council file 15887, an ordinance closing and vacating a public alleyway from West 13th and West 14th Streets between Peach and State Streets with reservation of existing utility rights of way. Sponsored by Mrs. Rancunzo and seconded by Mr. Jones, the council file ordinance number 15887, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the city council. Mr. Brennan, Mrs. Rancunzo, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. City council Brennan adopt, council file ordinance number 15887 by ayes, seven, nays, zero, on first reading. Council file 15888, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $46,285 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue and providing for the expenditure thereof 2014 Justice Assistance Grant. Sponsored by Mr. Kwiatowski and seconded by Mr. Mersky, the council file ordinance number 15888, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the city council. Mr. Brennan, Mrs. Rancunzo, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. City council Brennan adopt, council file ordinance 1588 by ayes, seven, nays, zero, on first reading. Council file 15889, an ordinance amending ordinance number 261958, the traffic code of the city of Erie by the installation of stop signs at three intersections. Sponsored by Mr. Mersky, seconded by Mr. Kwiatowski, the council file ordinance number 15889, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the city council. Mr. Brennan, Mrs. Rancunzo, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon.
Mr. President? Yes? I'd like to move the balance of the agenda. Give me a second. Moving second, are there any separations? Hearing no separations, Rose?
No separations.
Nope.
Okay, then that will take us to committee reports, Mr. President.
Hold on, the balance.
Okay, we're going to vote on the balance of the agenda before committee reports. So voting on the balance of the agenda, Mr. Brennan, Mrs. Rancunzo, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarski, and Mr. Witherspoon. Now we can go to committee reports, Mr. President.
We need to, before we go any further regarding the hotel, my understanding is that it's in our ordinance that the sidewalk is to be included in our vote. Is that not correct, council? Yes? Any questions?
Yes.
Okay. So the vote stands as is, am I correct?
You're asking about the sidewalk is to be included because it's, it's under the purview of the engineering office? That's correct, yes, that's.
Only ordinance 8,000, 2,000, 005.
Yes.
As it is written.
Yes, I understand.
Okay. All right. All right. Okay, uh, now we'll go to committee report and we'll start with Mr. Jim Winarski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I know Mr. Kennedy's here tonight and maybe he thought we'd have a little further discussion on this, but, uh, we did talk as a council and caucus and, uh, whether a sidewalk went in now or later, it really, you had it in your plan and, uh, that's great. And it's, it didn't need to be an issue and as a council, we didn't want it to be an issue. Uh, I just wanna thank you personally, as well as from councils, for having some vision down there on the bayfront. I know it's a hotel and they're saying another hotel, but it's still tax revenue dollars that you are putting in and we will receiving back as well as the City of Erie and the citizens of Erie. It's a pretty nice development and plan you have down there. It's a nice location and it's gonna fit perfectly down there. So we appreciate your insight and showing council your enthusiasm and development down there and, uh, thank you for investing in the City of Erie. With that, uh, uh, what else do we have here? I just wanted to get that out. No, I'm sorry. Um, I know emergency vehicles on the way home from work today. Uh, emergency vehicles, sometimes you don't hear them with the vehicles driving, uh, and the windows up now that it's getting a little cooler. But if one's coming through an intersection, you see it, please, please, please be cautious 'cause there's a lot of times there's a second emergency vehicle coming. It doesn't matter whether it's police, ambulance, uh, sometimes fire, but I just want the citizens, please beware out there that, uh, normally when one vehicle's coming, there's most likely a second one following. So please beware of that. We did get some numbers from our downtown partnership today between the, uh, Thursday night block parties, uh, between the different charities we've raised, they've raised over fifty thousand dollars for different charities. Uh, it is one of the great attractions for downtown Erie on a weekly basis during the summer. Um, I'm for one that hate to see them end. I hate to see summer end, but, uh, it's always a great that the local establishments can work together with the downtown partnership and, and get these things taken care of that help our local charities. Um, other than that, uh, I did attend the, uh, nine-one-one memorial. Uh, great job by our, um, former county councilman Mark Alex Androvich. I mean, it took a lot of years in the planning, but, uh, it was a nice crowd down there this past, uh, September eleventh and, uh, a great job and I, a great turnout. So, uh, good job for all the people involved and thanks for supporting it. And just on a final note, my daughter Marie, uh, got the, uh, what was it?
Athlete of the Week, was she?
It was a soccer standout player of the week for, uh, the Erie Times News and their varsity team, uh, Marie Winarski. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, sir. Councilman Brennan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I attended several events. Uh, one was the, uh, the G-CAC Dinner on, on the fifth. Uh, another great event to celebrate this, uh, the community work of this organization. And, uh, of course, there was many speakers and there was a, another, another great event for the city. I do wanna congratulate, uh, Councilman Jones. He was awarded the Paul Martin Service Above a Self Award. So again, uh, congratulations, uh, Councilman Jones. That's a great, great job. Um, also, uh, the Erie nine-eleven memorial, uh, opening ceremony was on September eleventh. Um, the ceremony was well-attended, about, about three hundred people or so. Um, and I wanna thank everybody who contributed financially, volunteered work, donations for memorial. I also wanna thank, um, Mr. Mark Alex for spearheading memorial, uh, as well as the entire committee. And, uh, when you do, uh, visit the memorial, don't forget the, there's an interior, uh, interactive exhibits inside the library. Uh, they did a great job, uh, putting that together and, uh, it's, uh, very well done. Uh, there's a video and there are also mother-in-act activities there. Um, the committee has presented the City of Erie plaque for the support of memorial. Uh, it's here and, uh, we'll find a, a location for that somewhere in the office or somewhere in, in the, in the building. Um, also, a couple upcoming things. Uh, Irish festivals this, um, weekend at St. Patrick's Church. The festival had moved from, uh, what has been traditionally at Rainbow Gardens back to the old neighborhood at, uh, East Fourth Street. Uh, again, it should be a, a great weekend, uh, celebrate Irish culture and celebrate, uh, really halfway to St. Patrick's Day. And I do, uh, lastly, I just wanna thank Mr. Kennedy for your continued investment, uh, in Erie and, and, uh, and our, our region and, uh, hopefully continue to do, uh, more products in the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilman Murzky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, just a few things to report on. Um, I attended, uh, the Mothers Against Teen Violence Moms Group as a guest speaker and, uh, I wanted to thank Ms. Arrington and her Moms Group for the continued vigilance on the east, uh, on the, to deal with gun violence, both on the east side and the west side. Um, one of the things that we've been dealing with recently are, um, threats of violence on the internet, specifically YouTube, and that was one of the topics of conversation. Um, Police Chief Bowers was there along with members of the Erie Police Department and other community leaders, um, from both, uh, county law enforcement and city law enforcement, along with, um, community activists and, and neighborhood stakeholders. And so that was a productive meeting, uh, with Ms. Arrington and she continues to do good work down there, um, with Mothers Against Teen Violence. The Sons of Lake Erie had their, uh, fish fry and, um, I, uh, on my way back to school, had popped in for a fish sandwich to go and I wanted to thank them for their, uh, continued advocacy of, on Erie's bayfront. And, um, I also attended, I like to eat a lot, the Slavic Festival. As, as evidenced by my tightening jackets here, the Slavic Festival, we had the, uh, traditional Slavic foods, just like my grandma used to make, uh, my grandma Bertis. And, and so it's, uh, uh, that was a delicious, uh, meal and a great fundraiser with good people, uh, from St. Peter and Paul's. Yesterday, I was, um, uh, very honored to attend the Italian-American Women's Dinner and, uh, give a citation to former mayor Joyce Savaccio, uh, who was their awardee. And, um, Mayor Savaccio, uh, was a former councilwoman, teacher, uh, union leader in the Erie School District and, um, and she's just an all-around great person continuing to give back to the community and taking public service, um, now in the private sector and, and giving back to the community. And we wanted to honor her for that. So on behalf of all of council, uh, I was able to do that. And I know council sends all of their, um, well, well wishes to her. And, um, just a few other things to report. I also attended the Sisters of St. Joseph Neighborhood Network fundraiser. When it comes to grassroots redevelopment, no one does it better than the Sisters of St. Joseph. Uh, they're doing it one neighborhood at a time. They're starting now with, um, an east side neighborhood network. They have the Little Italy Neighborhood Network and we, uh, encourage them and work with them, uh, as we partner to redevelop our city. Point of personal privilege, um, I'd like to thank my wife, Emily. She's hosting Party Off the Park tomorrow for the Perry Square Alliance, um, trying to get the final phases done of the Perry Square, uh, project. And that's tomorrow at five o'clock at, at the church next to Gannon. And, um, I got a lot of calls about the streets. And I talked to the Streets Department about our roads and why they haven't been paved. We have the milling, we have the top layer, or the base layer, but they didn't do the top layer yet. And a lot of people were, um, concerned about that. You know, they have to go slow over it. Their cars are getting damaged. And, um, the reason for that is with the, uh, curb cuts that they're putting in, they contracted out the, uh, curb cuts for the peoples with disabilities. And that didn't match up with the paving. So I asked the, um, Streets Department if next year they would do two things. One, better align the curb cuts with the streets, with the street paving. And second off, I, I asked them to, um, instead of cutting a straight line across, slope it down so that when you drive, it's just a slope down instead of a drop-off and a cut. And, um, those are two suggestions that they said that they will look at for next year. Um, those, uh, paving, that paving should be done, uh, very soon. As soon as the, um, curbs are put in, they'll, uh, finish up with those. But I did wanna let people know that that was the reason for that, that I was given from the Streets Department and that, that they are working on that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Councilman Jones.
Excuse me. Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I would like to, uh, thank, uh, Councilman Brennan who mentioned about the, the Paul Martin Award. That was a great honor for me. Paul Martin, uh, a gentleman before my time, uh, but is still benefiting all of us from a lot of the work that he did to make Erie a better community. Uh, that was pretty humbling. Back to, I guess, more important business, uh, September thirtieth, uh, there's, well, there's a group, and I'll just give a little bit of information. Uh, uh, there's a, a group and it's a conference that's gonna be held in Erie in November called Grad Nation. And it's looking at how do we, as a community, work towards improving our graduation rate for our students in, in this Erie, the City of Erie and Erie County, um, as a whole. And, uh, Erie was selected because of the Erie School District in this area, uh, working closely with the GE Foundation that does a lot of educational work around the country. Erie was selected as a site to hold a regional conference. And so that's gonna take place, uh, here in the City of Erie in the month of November. Uh, excuse me, and it's, uh, designed around creating a strategy, a community strategy on how to improve our graduation rates. And so one of the, part of the process is to have a series of focus groups with different demographics of the community to be able to get their input, to be able to get their ideas, to be able to get and to glean from the community, um, six, uh, to glean from the community solutions to a s, uh, community problem. A lot of times, you know, people go to a school board, they come to county council, city council, you, you know, they call or go up to the fifth floor and they're asking council members and elected officials to do something that we simply don't have the power to do. Um, but we can speak about community events that are happening that can support community solutions to problems. And so this is kind of the, the point I wanna make is that this is an opportunity for anyone that's interested, September thirtieth at East High School at six o'clock. There's gonna be a series of focus groups, uh, folks from all over the country, I mean, excuse me, from all over the city. People, um, from every pocket and demographic of the Erie community will be represented. So if you're interested in, in being a part of that, it's September thirtieth at six o'clock, East High School. If you have further questions, uh, I'll leave information in the clerk's office, but also you can call or contact Mary Beulah at the United Way office. She can give you more detailed information on how you can be a part of that and, and put your influence in, uh, your, your, your solutions to the challenge and the problem that we're looking to solve. Um, I would like to take a point as, as use Mr. Murzky and I, I don't know where we get this from, but we both say a point of privilege to talk about something personal. Um, uh, twenty years ago, um, what's the time? It's around now, uh, my wife and I, uh, were college students at Teal College. And, um, it's kinda corny, but, you know, I'm taking a moment. Today is the twentieth anniversary, believe it or not, of our first date. Now, we don't celebrate all these little milestones all over the place, but the first date and the anniversary, we definitely celebrate. And I'm still confused on how she would say yes to me, uh, as corny as I was that night. I was corny. I thought I was telling good jokes and now that I think about it, it was really bad. Mr. Kennedy, it was terrible. So, so I'm the luckiest man in, in chambers for sure and, in my opinion, and, and throughout the, the entire community. Uh, so I just wanna say happy twentieth anniversary and, um, and I love you very much. And thank you, Mr. President. That's my report. Now I can go home in peace.
Well, you better stop and get some basket of fruit or flowers or something.
Already done.
Very good and congratulations. Councilman Kowalski.
Yes, uh, we attended the Parking Authority meeting and, uh, things are progressing well and I think they plan on, um, coming down and meeting with us so we can ask them some questions on their future projects. They seem to be progressing in a very positive manner in solving future issues and trying to help the downtown in its, uh, uh, growing process. Uh, I'll be attending the O and E Pension Meeting Tuesday. Uh, and thanks, thank you, Jessica, for letting me attend the COG meeting. Uh, I think the COG is a very important organization. It gives you a chance to, uh, dialogue with other elected officials from around the county, 'cause we all have the same problems, maybe a little different in some ways, but all, all of us have the same basic issue problems. I think COG helps to solve that. Uh, one, I also attended the nine-one-one memorial. Would like to thank ex-councilman, uh, Mark Alexandrovich on his, uh, endeavor to bring that piece of steel here. As a young man at twenty-one, I looked out from the Empire State Building and saw two towers not yet complete. So I, I made a promise I'd get up there, but I never did. But, uh, I will get up into the Freedom Tower. Uh, I tended the Gannon Media Center grand opening. As a, as a, someone who volunteers there on Sunday on the radio shows, it's a vast step upwards for, uh, students planning on majoring in the arts or the communications. Uh, if you haven't seen it, I would advise you to see it. It's the old, uh, LCBA building on the corner there. Uh, I also wanna thank Eddie Kissel and the Sons of Lake Erie for, once again, allowing me to attend their event. They're a great bunch of guys who, uh, have the best interest of the waterfront. Uh, I wanna thank Tom Kennedy, a gentleman I met many years ago when I was at a low spot in my life. And I, I met him then and I know he's a man of great, great character and, uh, I'm glad he's investing in Erie and I hope that he does a lot more of it in the future. And Curtis left me, but I, I can't let him get the last word. Uh, in two days, I'll be celebrating my forty-fifth anniversary and meeting my wife. God, she should be a saint. She's a marvelous woman and it was forty-five years ago and on September nineteenth, so. Met her at Gannon. That's it.
Thank you very much and, uh, congratulations, uh, coming up to you, Cas. Councilwoman, council.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, just wanna comment a couple of things that we talked about tonight, but first, um, the Redevelopment Authority, um, as you may know, is having a change in their director. I believe, um, Scott Henry, who has been working there under Kim Green, will be the acting interim director and, um, Mrs. Kim Green is gonna be moving back into the Economic Development Office here in the city. So we wish her well in that position. She certainly, um, has a lot of experience and, um, I'm sure we'll jump right in. And Scott has done a really nice job working there, um, the last couple of years. So we look to wish them well. I did wanna clarify that that project on Fourteenth and Peach with the townhouses is a Redevelopment Authority project, not a City of Erie project. And I know that at this point, they're looking, they're seeking developers who are private developers who want to invest in further building in that area. So that is a initiative that they're trying to do with private developers. Um, a citizen also mentioned about the CRIS. We are under the impression that, we learned about the CRIS, that we have to create an authority in order to manage if the CRIS were to come through and know that's legislation. But, um, so that there'll be someone as an authority who's in charge of that, um, CRIS program. So that wouldn't be something necessarily that we would do, but it would be managed by the authority. Um, I did wanna let everybody know that the, um, two-hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand, two-hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand dollars has come to the city from the, um, Convention Center and Hotel. This was money that, um, the City Council used water reserve funds back when the original Convention Center and the first hotel were built. It, they had a, um, need in their budget for some help and they had, it was, I think it was two and a half million that we gave them out of the water reserve. But in any event, we have, um, been slowly being paid back some of that monies. And so the money will be reinvested in our water reserve account, which is used as a capital investment fund for the city. So that people know that they are making some, um, contribution back to us in payment of that money. Um, of course, I, I think the citizens know that that, they were asking, that is a tax-exempt hotel. The Convention Center property is tax-exempt. So, um, obviously, the art, our little trickle in the bucket doesn't change that effect. But anyway, that's the situation. Um, I was able to attend as a guest, um, the St. Luke's nine-eleven program. They had, um, invited first responders, um, fire, police, EMS, um, military service personnel to come and, um, uh, celebrate and, uh, to thank them for their service, and the little kids, um, from the second grade hosted, and they did a very nice job, and did a video, and talked about what, um, heroes meant to them, so really appreciate St. Luke's for, um, educating the kids on what happened, these kids were not born during 9/11, and certainly they need to know and how that touched, um, how that touched, uh, America. So, I appreciate the firefighters that came out, they did come to the service and have to leave on a call, so that's always a chance that that happens, so, um, the kids got to see what the reality is, and they were, some were able to come back, and we had police personnel there as well, and like I said, the military representatives from the Army, Navy, Marines, there was Coast Guards, there was a lot of, of folks there, and we really appreciate them doing that and taking their time out. Um, I know there's a lot of, um, different charity walks and things like that that happen in Erie particular on the weekends, I just wanted to, um, I know this weekend, there's an Alzheimer's Walk, and, um, one that's, um, touches my family is happening on Sunday, it's the Crohn's Colitis Foundation Walk, it's on Sunday at 3:30 at Beach One at Presquale, so encourage everybody, I know everybody has a cause, and everybody has something that affects their family, so appreciate everybody supporting those type of causes for our community, and that's all, thank you. Oh, Rose, thank you for the light bulbs.
You're welcome.
They changed the light bulbs and their lights in here, and the older I get, the harder it is for me to see, so I appreciate the light bulbs being changed, thank you.
Thank you very much, I don't have a report, we go to our treasurer.
Controller.
I mean, sorry.
Controller?
So, my time's up, anyway.
Um, Rose, I'll pass this letter out to you, um, and as it's required annually by my office, um, I presented to you the 2015 minimum municipal obligation for the city for the pension funds, and in that letter, it explains exactly the amount, um, that we're looking at, so if anyone has any questions regarding that, you can contact me in my office at any time, um, and to keep you informed on the investment committee for the searches for the managers and custodians, that, um, the proposals are going to be accepted until the end of this week, and then after this week, starting next week, we're going to go and review everything and, uh, make a decision on who is going to be the best candidate, start doing some interviewing, which is going to take some time, and hopefully by the meeting in November, we will have made a decision, and we can present it to the, to the board, and they can decide whether we're going to follow through with the new managers and the custodians, and that's all I have.
Thank you very much, administration.
Good evening, um, just a couple of things, of, of course, the mayor and members of the administration have attended many of the events that, um, city council members have as well, want to, um, congratulate Councilman Jones on his award that was received at the GCAC Dinner, of course, Mayor said it was there, um, the Neighborhood Art House had their fundraiser this year, Neighborhood Art House does great things for the kids, the inner-city kids in the neighborhood, um, great pieces of art that can be purchased, um, auctioned off, and, and so on, so I, I hope that they had a, a good turnout, they did have a good turn, turnout, but I, I hope they raised the funds needed, um, to keep the Neighborhood Art House going. Um, want to thank the Sons of Lake Erie for the fabulous luncheon that they put on every year, um, and congratulate former Mayor Joyce Savaccio for her, um, selection from the Italian-American Women's Association, uh, on their, celebrating their 30th anniversary, um, Mayor Savaccio was certainly, um, an advocate for education and, and all things Erie, so I think that was a, a fitting, um, tribute from their organization as well. Um, Friday, October 3rd, I know we'll have another council meeting before this comes up, but we will be turning the Perry Square Fountain pink in honor of Breast Cancer Awareness Month, um, if you have an opportunity, come out at noon to join us in Perry Square, hopefully we'll have great weather, couple of speakers, we have some singers from Wayne School, the Wayne School ambassadors will be here, um, leading us in a couple of songs, a short ceremony, only about 45 minutes, so if you have an opportunity, please come out and, and join us for that, have a great evening.
Thank you very much. No other business, meeting is adjourned.
City and council adjourns at 8:29. Mr. Brennan, Mrs. Rancunzo, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Murski, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon.
Thank you.